There are five councilors present, one absent, and one vacancy. We do have four.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the temple with liberty and justice forever.
Special orders and announcements.
We have several this evening. The first one is a proclamation honoring Tony Scodwell.
Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. Official proclamation of the city of Beloit. Whereas Tony Scodwell is a Beloit native and graduate of Beloit Memorial High School, and whereas Tony Scodwell is a jazz musician and world-class trumpet player, as well as a professional photographer, and whereas Tony Scodwell was invited to return to Beloit as the 2017 Hall of Fame inductee, and whereas Tony Scodwell's impressive resume includes studying at the prestigious Berkley School of Music in Boston, and touring with the Stan Ketten Orchestra, the Tommy Dorsey Orchestra, and Frank Sinatra Jr., and whereas Tony Scodwell has appeared with prominent world performers such as Frank Sinatra, Diana Ross, Tony Bennett, Elvis Presley, Ann Margaret, Tom Jones, Roy Clark, Anthony Newley, Barbra Streisand, and Cher, and whereas Tony Scodwell has designed custom signature trumpets and flugelhorns that have gained wide acceptance among professional musicians, and whereas Tony Scodwell's remarkable photography skills can be viewed worldwide in numerous publications. Now therefore, the city council president of the city of Beloit does hereby proclaim April 17 through 21st, 2017, as Tony Scodwell Honor Week, in honor and recognition of his professional achievements and significant influence on the musical community, presented this 17th day of April, 2017, David F. Lukey, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you Sheila. I just wanted to announce to everybody assembled here, on Thursday, there'll be a Hall of Honor induction at Beloit Memorial High School, and Tony at that time will receive one of these proclamations, and this will also be Tony Scodwell Week in Beloit, and so hopefully many of you can go to some of his performances. Our next proclamation will be read by Counselor Duncan.
It's a proclamation in recognition of Beloit Floral celebrating 100 years in business.
Whereas the city council of the city of Beloit wishes to acknowledge entrepreneurs who helped to make Beloit an outstanding community in which to live, learn, work, play, and do business, and whereas Thomas Panos, a Greek immigrant, settled in Beloit at the age of 20 and opened Beloit Floral with an investment of $500 in 1916, and whereas Mr. Panos worked seven days a week and passed his strong work ethic along to his children and employees, and whereas Mr. Panos originally operated Beloit Floral in the downtown area, growing the business to two locations, and whereas after Mr. Panos passed away, the downtown location was closed in favor of consolidating and expanding the current store at 1205 Cranston Road, and whereas Beloit Floral continued to grow and flourish under the leadership of George and Nancy Panos Spilias, and whereas Nancy Panos Spilias continues to manage the second-generation business with the assistance of her daughter, Mary Foster, and dedicated longtime employees, and whereas Beloit Floral has had a presence at countless weddings, funerals, proms, pageants, and more, providing smiles and sympathy for 100 years, and whereas the Panos and Spilias families have been strong advocates for the city of Beloit, supporting economic development and improving our quality of life through the beauty and language of flowers, and their philanthropic contributions to the Beloit community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Beloit City Council does hereby honor and congratulate Beloit Floral and commemorate the legacy created by Thomas Panos over 100 years ago, presented on the 17th day of April, 2017, by the Beloit City Council. And her daughter may want to share a few words with us.
Just a little thank you from the Spilias family and all the staff at Beloit Floral. We want to thank you all for the support you've given us for 100 years, and hopefully I can continue a little bit more than 100. Thanks again for everything and the support.
And Ms. Spilias is here, and I just want to say thank you for what you and your family give every day to this community. You know, it's wonderful when you can go in a place and you know everybody? I mean, that's what makes Beloit special. It's people like you and like your family, so thank you for all that you do.
D is a proclamation declaring April 28th, 2017, as Arbor Day.
Counselor DeForest.
An official proclamation of the city of Beloit. To acknowledge one of my favorite days of the year. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas Beloit has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree-planting ways. Now therefore, I, David F. Lukey, President of the Beloit City Council, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 28th, 2017, as Arbor Day in the city of Beloit, and urge all residents to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to support our city's urban forestry program. And be it further proclaimed that all Beloit residents are encouraged to plant trees to brighten the community and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Dated the 17th day of April, 2017, David F. Lukey, President. And we do have our urban forester here, so excited for him to come down to accept this proclamation.
Mr. Fergert.
Mr. Fergert, do you have a few words for us?
Oh sure. Thank you so much. Hi, I'm Mike Fergert. I am your forestry operations supervisor. I have with me my crew tonight. I'd like to introduce them. We'll start with our new guy on the crew. This is Alex Brooker. Please stand up, Alex. He comes from a long background in forestry, and he's very adept to what we need. And we have Derek Ludi. And the one we all lean on, Tom Halbert. And the one that holds us together in the office, Ann Hill. Our, today, or this year's Arbor Day Extravaganza will be at Grinnell Hall on Friday, the 28th, at 10:00 a.m. We wish you would all attend. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
All right. And D is a proclamation declaring April 27th, 2017, as Stand Against Racism Day.
Sheila.
An official proclamation of the city of Beloit. Whereas racism and discrimination hurt everyone and have a profound effect on children, adults, communities, and institutions, and whereas racism can take many different forms, including discrimination, personal attacks, violence, written or verbal threats or insults, damage to property, graffiti, or inequity of treatment to individuals of race, color, creed, and ethnicity by institutions, and whereas the city of Beloit recognizes that all people should be treated with dignity, respect, and justice, and whereas Stand Against Racism Day is a nationally-recognized initiative with a purpose to encourage communities to raise awareness that racism still exists, while offering to be a part of the solution to end racism and other forms of discrimination, and whereas racism acts of hate, violence, and disparities in our institutions based on race, religion, ethnic heritage, gender, gender orientation, or disability, not only affect the victim, but affect our entire community and nation, and whereas the city of Beloit supports the mission of the YWCA of Rock County to eliminate racism in our nation, state, and community. Now therefore, the city council president of the Beloit City Council does hereby declare Thursday, April 27th, 2017, as Stand Against Racism Day in the city of Beloit, and calls upon all Beloit residents to support celebrating diversity and promoting racial justice in the Beloit community. Dated the 17th day of April, 2017, David F. Lukey, President. And we have Christina Barrios here with the YWCA to accept this proclamation.
Thank you, and on behalf of our executive director and the YWCA of Rock County, I take this, and as we continue our work, and continue our work with eliminating racism and empowering women, I want to thank you all on behalf of our executive director Angela Moore, who is not able to be here today. And I'd also like to ask a favor if you wouldn't mind, as city council members could take a photo with me with our signs of Stand Against Racism. We also have an event coming up on the 27th at 12:00 noon at the Gantree Plaza on Grand Avenue, and so if you don't mind.
That'd be great. Just want to do it back there where there's good lighting. Don't you guys come down?
Come here, huh? Don't do that. It's okay.
Know who the photographer is, huh?
Why don't you come down here in front?
Come forward a little bit, you're under the light.
Yeah, in the shadows. Come out of the shadows. There we go. Smile, you best smile. Okay. You know, really, we just don't get to put me.
Thank you, Christina. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
I'll just sit up here. Got the clerk picking on me now, I guess. Sit away in the corner or something.
No, we love you.
People can buy photos afterwards, right? Okay. There are, there's no public hearings.
There are no public hearings?
So we come to the public comments. At this stage, anybody who'd like to address the council may do so. We'd like to ask you to limit your comments to three minutes or less. Make no disparaging comments or negative comments or personal attacks. So I, at this time, anybody can speak, but I do have three people who'll take an order as they turn these in, and we'll take these first, and after these three, anybody else who'd like to speak. So our first speaker, and again, please limit to three minutes, Phil Wilson. Phil, are you here? Just give your name, please, and your address, Phil.
Phil Wilson, 3035 Pleasant Street, apartment 3414, I believe. I just moved here a week ago at the tower apartments down there. What I'd like to speak about tonight is the stigma of mental illness. There's very few people that'll talk about mental illness. Only when something happens, oh, he or she had a history of mental illness. You don't hear about the good people. You don't hear about the 95% that are good people that have a mental illness, but you just hear the bad stuff. And I'm here to say, when I, I, this is the first time I've been in front on this mic in 15 years or better, when Steve Gregg was here, and Hugo Henry, he always was with me, he said, "Phil, my man. Phil, my man." He's not with us, neither is Steve Gregg. And Jane Wood, city manager at the time, and they always had time for me when I went up to their office. They said, "What can we do for you today, Phil?" So I realize I only got three minutes, but I intend on being down here for every meeting hereafter to speak. And if, I, my 40th anniversary with mental illness will be in October of this year, so I do know a little bit about what I talk about. I've spent a lot of time behind barbed wire, and it's not that much fun, but the food's good. So that's all I say tonight.
Thank you, Phil. Phil, Steve and Hugo are still with us in spirit. Thank you.
You're still with us?
In spirit. Their spirit is with us.
In the building?
Yes.
Yeah, I know. For sure.
Like Elvis. Thank you, Phil. Thank you. Okay. Our next speaker, James Ferringer.
Hi. James Ferriger, 2796 East Ridge Road. First, I'd like to say one thing. I'd like to thank the outgoing councilors, two of whom are not here, Marilyn Solonaker and Regina Hendricks, but I'd also like to especially congratulate David Lukey on the wonderful service he's given to the city council and to the city for many years. The other thing I'd like to talk about is item number 11 on the agenda tonight, which is Cindy branding and logo. Now, I understand there's going to be a presentation about this, and I'm really looking forward to it. I don't know if any of you have seen, but there's been quite a bit of traffic on social media, and I think that that needs to be taken into consideration. Personally, the first time the binary choice of these logo branding came up in front of me was on Facebook. And as chairman of the plan commission, I somehow feel involved in signage that I may have dropped the ball or somehow missed a memo, but I think a lot of people, I like to believe that I speak for a number of people here in the city, coming in from this media inundation, also may feel the same way. Now, I understand there are going to be financial considerations, timing consideration, and who knows, maybe other considerations as well. However, I think personally, I feel a little left out, and I'm not quite sure how to be put back into this process. We all want Beloit to look good. We want to make the impression. What it's going to take to do that, we have options to do this, and I look forward to the council and the way that they respond to these choices that they make, and I hope they'll consider that there may be another possible way to do this, but good luck for you folks, and thank you very much, and thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Jim. Our next speaker, Rick McGrath.
I also wanted to speak on the branding logo topic. I am not a graphic designer, neither do I play one on TV. However, I do work with a lot of other people's logos, a lot, on a regular basis, and have for years, and so there are things that I see that constitute a good logo and things that do not. Without getting into, without taking class time, there are some fundamental problems with this logo that you may not recognize just to look at it on your screen, but when you hand it off to someone to do something with, it's not necessarily a matter of you're making it difficult for them, but you're making it difficult for them to help you to communicate what you're trying to communicate. There, I guess the first thing is I'm curious what the driver for this in the first place is. Of all the things that we can't afford, this is something that we can afford? There are, those businesses, those entities that do choose to update their logo and their branding, there's a way that they do it, and it's not this way. Just think of, you know, Apple, and FedEx, and Pepsi-Cola, Kentucky Fried Chicken, the list goes on and on. There's a way to update your logo. Beloit has a, has decades of accrued brand identification with the existing logo. You don't just throw that away and introduce a completely new concept. Generally speaking, what they will do is they will take the existing logo and they will modify it so that there's an identification with, oh, okay, I guess Beloit, or Kentucky Fried Chicken, or Apple, or AT&amp;T, oh, I guess they are modifying their, there's just no logo. You don't just throw that away with, for a new concept. You keep the same colors if possible. I don't know why we want to include City of in Wisconsin. It is Beloit, period, full stop. Take it, own it. It is not up to us to differentiate ourselves from the township or the possibility or eventuality of the village. We are Beloit. It is up to other parties to distinguish themselves from us, not the other way around. It's too many words. When companies update their logos, generally you will find that they simplify their logo. They make it fewer elements, less "guga." We are going in the opposite direction. We are adding more stuff. We're making this logo more complicated and harder to identify when you reduce it down to a business card, or a brochure, or lots of other things. Or if you put it up on a big billboard and all you see is Beloit, and what are these other little letters? You can't read that. There's a lot of fundamental errors with this that it looks like it was handed off to an intern. This doesn't, this does not reflect professional caliber work. It looks like clip art, frankly. And lastly, I would say that we generally, we frequently try to encourage consumers to buy local. We try to encourage private business to buy local, or publicly-funded entities like the city, or the school, or the library, or visi, these public entities, you need to lead by example by buying local whenever possible. Absolutely, there are goods and services that are not available local, but you need to check local first. I'm curious if anybody checked with the local Greater Beloit Chamber of Commerce. There are people around here who do this kind of work. That's about what I have to say.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you for your time.
Second call for anybody else who would like to address the council. Third and final call for anybody else who'd like to address the council at this time, please step forward. That will close the public comments. Consent agenda.
All items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member still requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda.
Would anybody like something removed? Is there a motion?
Some moved?
Moved by DeForest, seconded by Duncan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Licenses.
Under licenses this evening, we have a resolution approving an operator's bartender's license for Whitney Wallraven.
Captain Reese.
The applicant submitted her application to, for an alcohol beverage operator's license on February the 21st. She completed her application. She showed proof of completion of a server beverage course. She provided satisfactory ID and paid the application fee. Her application was then forwarded to me to conduct a background investigation, and then I construct a memo based upon my findings. Based on the background, I recommended the applicant be denied for the beverage operator's license. The app, or the city clerk sent a letter to the applicant advising her of the denial. She requested an appeal, and the matter came before the Alcohol Beverage License Control Committee on April the 11th. The background, on the, on the application, each applicant must disclose any and all convictions of laws or ordinances that have occurred within the last five years. The applicant made one disclosure of a DUI arrest, it happened in Illinois, that she says occurred in December of 2015. The background determined that the offense occurred in December of 15, however, the conviction actually occurred in 17. There was an accompanying violation that went with that conviction. When she refused to submit to a chemical test, it's an implied consent violation. That was another conviction. There was a third conviction in April of 15 for operating a vehicle without insurance. But most importantly, back in 2003, there was a conviction for another DUI in Illinois for operating one under the influence of alcohol in Wisconsin. So there were two violations of the OWI. There was an implied consent violation, and it was an operating without insurance violation.
Just to clarify, one of those was in 2003?
Correct. 2003, and then there were two convictions, one conviction in 15, a conviction in 16, and a conviction in 17.
Counselor questions.
I had a comment.
Go ahead. Counselor Duncan.
Okay.
It is, it is now.
Okay. I just wanted to say that I attended the Alcohol Beverage License Control Committee meeting on April 11th. There was a vote to uphold the staff recommendation to deny, and I, and that vote ended in a tie, so the motion failed, and now it's before us tonight. I really, really struggle with this issue, as there seem to be some gray areas, like the timeline about past incidents, considering the age of the occurrence, especially the first incident, and also that this may be a main source of income for the young lady that spoke. However, I think that we must also consider the welfare of our citizens and the presidents that we will set as a council, and the lady that was wanting the license. She's worked so hard to build her positive reputation, and has done some wonderful things for this community, and I can attest to that firsthand, but from my understanding, she can continue to work and serve alcohol under supervision, but she just can't oversee as a bartender if we uphold the recommendation. Is that correct?
She cannot be a licensed server.
Right.
That is correct.
Okay. That's all I have.
That's not clear, though. She can serve alcohol?
Under the supervision of someone else.
Right.
Another licensed.
Right.
So attorney.
You have to turn her on. Dave, you have to turn her on.
There we go. If I could recommend, you have Ms. Wallraven come and provide her input before any further discussions on it, just so that the council has a clear picture of both Captain Reese and the Police Department's recommendation, and Ms. Wallraven's recommendation.
Whitney, would you want to step forward, please? Just give your name and address, please. Thank you.
I apologize, I don't have much of a voice right now.
Speak into the thing, then we can hear you.
Whitney Wallraven, 409 Central Avenue here in Beloit, Wisconsin.
Go ahead.
This is your appeal of Captain Reese's and the Police Department's recommendation. Why don't you let the council know why you believe you should be entitled to a license?
As I've stated in my appeal letter and at the meeting that was held last Tuesday, I've lived in the Beloit community for the past 11 years. I've been an upstanding citizen. I volunteered not only for the Downtown Beloit Association, but for the Chamber of Commerce, for the Zonta Club of Beloit, Youth to Youth Coalition for Change, and I've been the executive director for a nonprofit, Family Respite Care Services. I feel that my character in the community and what I've been able to contribute should count more than what's appearing on my record. Yes, I do have the conviction of a DUI in Illinois in 2003. At that time, I was 20 years of old, 20 years of age, sorry. I would like to state that the no insurance that was mentioned by Captain Dan Reese was actually a 2011 date, not 2015, that was stated just now. I do have the implied consent, however, that was rolled into the official OWI. That actually was not a secondary charge that I received, according to the paperwork that I have handy. Despite my conviction from the OWI in 2015, that just went through in January this year, I do maintain my innocence. I understand that, yes, I was convicted, but the symptoms of a diagnosis of vertigo that I have are very similar to the symptoms of somebody who's under the influence. And yes, I was convicted under the court of law, and that was And yes, I was convicted under the court of law, and that was based on the fact that I did refuse to give a breathalyzer due to the symptoms I was encountering at that time. I do not feel that that is a clear representation of my beliefs and what I'm able to provide to the community of Beloit. And despite the position that I hold career-wise, I will always with, uh, I will always present myself as a professional, and will always have the community's better interest in mind.
Counselor questions? Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. Whitney, thank you for coming to speak with us, and I appreciate what you do for the community, and I appreciate, um, your efforts to share your concerns with us. Um, I just want to, um, share with you my perspective on this matter, because I want to make sure that you know that I don't expect any resident in our community to be perfect. Uh, we all have things that we've done in the past that have, you know, reflected poorly on ourselves. We've all made mistakes. Um, with that said, however, having an operator's license is a privilege, and that privilege should not be bestowed on someone that has an OWI from just two years ago. It doesn't matter who the person is, doesn't matter how wonderful they are, how many great things they do for the community, the nature of that offense that you were convicted of when you, and you chose not to take the chemical test to clear yourself from that, I can't in good conscience award an operator's license for liquor when you have an OWI just two years ago. I personally can't do that, no, no matter how wonderful you are. Um, the, the offense is too closely tied to the nature of the privilege. So I just wanted to let you know that. Um, this is not about a personal character thing, it's about the privilege that comes with that license. So I just wanted to give you the courtesy of letting you know why I will be voting the way I will tonight.
I understand, and I respect that.
Thank you.
Other comments from counselors? Anything else you'd like to say, Whitney?
I would just like to note that I've stood alongside many of you. I've had many professional encounters with a few of you, and I would like that to be, um, something that you remember, I guess. Do not base me as a character off of my driving record, um, because I am still the same person with the same beliefs in mind. So I just want to clarify that, because I do know a few of you through other avenues, and I just want that to be noted, that please remember me from what I've done alongside you as a professional representing Beloit, not verse, not based on my driving record.
Thank you. What I will add is that, uh, I, based on my background, my working with people for many, many years, um, sometimes I place character before, and so I will most likely be voting in the, uh, the affirmative to grant the license. So I may be the only one, but I, um, I don't think it's a, a gamble. I think it's, I'm basing it on character, so I'll leave it, I'll leave it at that.
I have a question. I guess if there was a tie, so to speak, at the alcohol meeting, I guess I need to, I would like to know a little of the conversation of why, I mean, what brought it to a tie? What, I mean, I just, I need to know. Regina, I know Tara, I know you're there, I don't know if they can...
I think it had to do...
Go ahead, Regina, turn, turn your thing.
I think the gray areas was, the first offense was that, was your age, it was 20 years old. And then the other one, when it was, it was like a couple years ago. And so it was just that time length, I think, in between. And then two, we were, um, it seemed as if you were, uh, this was a source of income for you, because you aren't at your agency anymore. So I think that was the tough part for this committee. And, um, I know also we had the city attorney who was present that also shared with us, you know, the precedents of what we've done in the past. And usually, Beth, if you may, just want to just kind of clarify some of that.
I, I don't think I had an opinion about the, the pass. I believe Captain Reese indicated that two prior OWI convictions have resulted in denials from the, denial recommendation from the Police Department. Um, and, um, Ms. Duncan, you did ask a question about whether or not she could still operate as a bartender without the license. The answer is yes. She would have to be supervised by a licensed bartender or the owner of the establishment, so she still could be employed, um, but she could not work unsupervised.
But she could still work.
She could.
And make money.
She could.
So, so she could still support, if, if she's saying that's the...
That's her source of income.
The source, source of income, she could still have a source of income by not being the bartender. And then I guess part two of that is, um, I'm always one of asking, are we setting a precedent, um, by allowing this for future councils, or even this council, council in the future, where if we have another situation like this? And I realize we look at things on a case-by-case basis, but I also like to look at being consistent. But I think once we do something, are we setting a necessary precedent in the future by individuals saying, uh, getting violations of this and wanting to get a license? And then we're stuck of saying, if we don't grant it, are we in more, doing more harm than good? And then part C of that is, um, and I'm sure Sheila would probably would agree with me that this is something, as she said, is a privilege, but we take a hard look at this, that when people come down for license, I mean, there's been situations where, um, individuals have gone and maybe not had citations in a while, but we've taken a tough stand because we want to make sure that we're doing things right and that we're protecting the citizens. And not saying that you are doing anything wrong, but I'm just looking at things of how we've done, and the consistency that we've been in that, that I'd be afraid of setting a new precedent, um, in this case. And I am not saying that you're not, you're a bad person, and, and I'm also a person that looks at the person as an individual, not of what they've done in the past, because as Sheila, Counselor DeForest, said, we've all done stuff in the past, um, that we, we don't rate people on that, I rate people as an individual, but when we're representing the entire community, we need to look at all options that, because my biggest thing is, is are we setting something up as a precedent for the future?
I, I think to your multi-question, um, I think you always run the risk on, on setting what they call a precedent. Someone's going to argue in the future that, well, you allowed two OWIs in the past, so certainly my OWI last month shouldn't be included. So you have to be cognizant of that, but as you said, each case is determined on a case-by-case basis, uh, with what the, you know, individual facts are with whatever they're applying for. So, um, it's, it is, as you said, kind of, uh, something that you have to take into account when you make your decision tonight.
Go ahead, Mark.
Considering our unusual circumstance, we're two counselors short tonight, and since you can work without the applicable license, I would make a motion to table this until the next council meeting. It's one of our full council contingent to play...
And I guess my, my question is, what would be the purpose of tabling it? Because the next council meeting, we'll have a new counselor, we have new counselors at the table, but I think, I mean, I don't, guess I don't see the need to...
A three to two, a three to two vote here wouldn't, wouldn't do anything.
But we don't know what, we don't know what the vote's going to be until we at least call for the vote, but I don't see, in my opinion, I don't see a reason for tabling it if we, uh, we have enough people here, we have a quorum to, to cast a vote, but like I said, our next meeting is going to be in, under a new council. This falls under old council business, so I think it's time for us to react to this and not carry it over to a new council. I mean, if we have the individuals here, I don't see the need of laying it over for a vote. I mean, I don't know what laying it over is going to, um, do, and we, we're not going to get any additional information. Usually when you lay something over, it's for additional information, or to consider it a little bit longer, or talk to staff, but I think we have all the information right now that we need to make a decision. That's just my personal opinion, uh, but I think we should call for a vote.
Did you want to answer? Is there a reason? Go ahead.
Um, Counselor Prashil did make a, a motion, so I don't know if there's been a second, so maybe that will...
There's a second.
What is your mo, just...
My motion is that we table this until the next council meeting.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Dave.
I'd like to ask a question.
Go ahead.
Um, Counselor Prashil, could, could you share your rationale for why? Is it because you, you feel that you want her to have seven full voting members?
Exactly, exactly. Because it was a tie vote on the, on the alcohol committee. I don't want her to face a, a, a null vote here just because we don't have enough people, regardless of the outcome, regardless.
All right, I understand.
I think she, I think, in this kind of weird circumstance, this is the first time in how many years this has happened? I think she deserves that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of postponing until the next council meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Uh, we should take a, I think it was four to one, am I wrong? Then, we better do a head count, just in case.
DeForest, aye. Duncan?
Aye.
Levy?
Nay.
Lukey?
Aye.
Prashil?
Aye.
It passes four to one.
Mr. President, for a point of clarification, that would be the next regularly scheduled meeting of the council on May 1st, correct?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, because there is a, maybe because there is another, I mean, that's a good point. We do have another council meeting tomorrow.
Um, actually, we wouldn't have time to notice that anyway, so, um, just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page and, and to let you know that the next regularly scheduled meeting will be Monday, May 1st.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ordinances.
Under ordinances this evening, 8A is a proposed ordinance to amend various provisions of Chapter 6, 25, and 29 of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit pertaining to hazardous material incident responses and wastewater treatment system. This is second reading.
Cheryl Simples.
Good evening.
Hi, Cheryl.
Hello? The sewer use ordinance was required to update, uh, from the Wisconsin Administrative Code NR211 for the streamlining requirements. In addition, uh, while we were doing some changes to that, we took the opportunity to do some clarification on some updates. For example, the plumbing code, uh, references were outdated, so we updated those. Um, also, we, in the enforcement response plan that we're required to have, we changed from a point system that was initially started in 2007 and switched it over to the current Chapter 25. So basically, those were the major changes.
Questions? There a motion?
Moved, moved.
Second.
Moved by Levy, seconded by Duncan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five, Cheryl. Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
B.
A B, a proposed ordinance to remove parking on the east side of Hemlock Street across from 1772 Hemlock Street. This is first reading.
Greg Boyson.
The city received a request for this ordinance from Kenny Bowersock, the current resident of 1772 Hemlock Street. The Traffic Review Committee reviewed the issue during their March 27th meeting and voted six to zero in favor of removing the parking on the east side of Hemlock Street across from the 1772, uh, Hemlock Street driveway. Hemlock Street is a narrow one-way street with vehicular, uh, with vehicles traveling northbound. Mr. Bowersock met with the engineering staff and explained that he is having trouble exiting his driveway when a car is parked across from his driveway entrance. Currently, parking is not allowed on the west side of the street, and most driveways on the street are directly across from another driveway, thus eliminating the possibility of parking in these areas. 1772, uh, does not have a driveway located across from its opening. The proposed parking restriction is similar to a parking restriction across from the driveway at 1764 Hemlock, which has effectively addressed a similar problem at that location. The loc, uh, the owners of the residents at 17, the owners and the residents at 1772, 1773, and 1777 Hemlock Street were notified of the proposed change, and the Engineering Division recommends adoption of this ordinance, removing parking on the east side of Hemlock across from the 1772, uh, Hemlock Street driveway.
Counselor questions? Question, question. Counsel Levy.
Has there been any, uh, objection to this at all from anyone that we know?
No, there's not.
Um, hearing that, Mr. President, if I am so in order to do, I would like to entertain a motion, if possible, to suspend the rules for a second reading and move this to a vote at this...
Motion to suspend rules. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mark.
Sheila.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Counselor DeForest.
Um, I think most of you know I'm historically against suspending the rules unless it's a, it's a matter of timeliness and urgency. There's a reason why our procedures are set up to have a second reading, because we are making a change, and we want to make sure we give residents ample opportunity to be aware of it and to come forward with concerns. Uh, this makes sense to me, it's a no-brainer. However, there's a, there's a reason why we operate this way, to allow a second reading. And so, since I don't see an urgency in deciding this, I would ask that we allow the process to unfold and, and, uh, wait for a second reading as we are, as we are, um, organized to do. Thank you.
Other comments? Okay, we have a motion and second to suspend the rules. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Passes four to one. Was there another nay, just one nay? Passes four to one to suspend the rules. Is there another motion?
I'll move on the underlying merits.
There's a motion and seconded to move ahead to, uh, pass the proposed ordinance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five, zero. Appointments.
Individuals above to be named have been nominated for a seat on the City Board Committee and Commission. Each nomination is subject to confirmation by the City Council. Approval of appointments will be accomplished by one motion unless, unless a council member requests to take up the nomination separately, in which event the nomination will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point in the agenda. This evening's appointments are the Board of Appeals, John P. Peterson, replacing Randall Fiore to a regular term, ending May 31st, 2017. Dustin Grunau, replacing John P. Peterson as first alternate, term ending May 31st, 2017. On the Plan Commission, incumbent James Farager to a term ending April 30th, 2020. And incumbent Eric Otis Johnson to a term ending April 30th, 2020. And Police and Fire Commission incumbent Dennis Murphy to a term ending 2022.
Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Moved by DeForest, seconded by Duncan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five, zero. Counselor activities and upcoming events. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you.
Okay, you're on.
Okay. First, I would like to say thank you to Dave Lukey for his service, um, on City Council and in serving as president, um, this past year. I want to especially acknowledge your willingness to really listen to the residents. Um, frequently, when I talk to residents, they'll say, yes, I'm calling you, and I talk to Dave Lukey. So they have confidence that you listen to them and that you really look into the matter, and I have great respect for you for that. Um, and I really appreciate how, um, dedicated you've been to attending so many city council functions, community events. Um, every time I'm at an event, you're right there. So thank you so much for your dedication. You will be missed.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Yes, thank you. Um, and I would like to also extend another thank you to, um, our incredible law enforcement, uh, folks. Um, the, this last, uh, uh, week, week and a half, um, has been very draining for them. Um, the, the City of Beloit, the Rock County Sheriff's Department, all of the surrounding jurisdictions who work together, um, to investigate, uh, the person that was at large that was threatening our community. Um, I know they put in a lot of overtime, worked a lot of long hours, um, to really, uh, catch this individual and keep us safe. So I want to extend my heartfelt thank you. Um, I thought of you often as I was going to sleep, knowing that you were probably still up, working long days to help find this individual. I also want to thank the community. Um, we've seen quite a change over this last year of the community's willingness to really step up and support our police officers, and I want to thank you for that. And I know that lies, uh, in part because of the confidence that you have, um, in our leadership and, um, in what we're doing. I, I want to point out that it really was a community tip that finally caught this individual. Someone, uh, reported a suspicious person, and that is what led to, um, to, to capturing this person. So thank you. You do matter, um, and thank you for being a part of helping us to keep us safe. So I wanted to emphasize that. Um, I also, um, sorry, I'm looking for the rest of my notes here. Um, I also wanted to make, um, a, a point. I, I, I try to keep track of when I've requested that things, um, be discussed as the council, and I just wanted to, for the record again, um, state that I had asked that we would, at some future point, have a discussion about notification. Um, and I was assured that we would schedule a workshop to really address notification, and I'm asking again to make sure that that's something that we plan for the future. I'm hoping that whoever is the next council president, that they will take that request seriously. Um, it has been an issue since I've been on council for nine years that keeps coming It has been an issue since I've been on council for nine years that keeps coming up again and again about what is appropriate proper notification to make sure that people are aware of changes that are being proposed. And again, I'm requesting that a second time publicly. Thank you.
Thank you Sheila. Counselor Preschel.
Well, spring is here, in case anybody didn't notice. I want to let you know, Dave, that I really like having you up here, and I think you've been really good as the president, and keeping everything nice and even, and listening to us, and taking all our rants and raving, you know, into consideration. So I really appreciate that. I don't know, it's going to be a little weird without you up here, you know? Yeah, we go way back. Anyway, I really don't have much else to say today, except it's good to see that we're finally bringing this logo together, and maybe we can get something accomplished. Maybe not, but that's okay, too.
Thank you Mark. Counselor Duncan.
I have to write everything down. First, I want to begin, and again, thank Counselor Dave Lukey. Thank you, Dave. I can call you any time of the night, and you're at every event. Even when I spoke at Beloit College, that meant a lot to me to have your support as the president of this council, and you were right there. So, I will miss that. And also Regina, for both of your service to our City Council. I will miss both of you, but wish you much continued success in the future. But something tells me that I'll bump into you somewhere in Beloit. That's what makes Beloit so special, and both of you have been part of that. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you Regina.
Also, congratulations to the new councilors, and they are here tonight. Clint Anderson is here, Sherri Blakely's here, and Nancy Forbeck. I am so excited that you're joining our team and looking forward to working with each of you. As far as activities, I attended the Alcohol Beverage and License Control Committee on April 11th, and on Wednesday, April 17th, I'm going to be with the Arrow and Light Club Cub Scout Pack 625 at Gaston School. I will be discussing important issues facing our community with the children, and it will be great to get their input as well, so I'm sure they'll have lots to share with me. Special thanks to Lynn Cruz for inviting me, so thank you. And there will be a Cinco de Mayo celebration hosted by Latino service providers on Saturday, April 29th, at St. Jude Catholic Church, located at 717 Hackett Street. This will be a family affair. Admission is free, and it is $5 per person for food. The event is significant because it is the celebration of the Mexican victory over French forces at the Battle of Puebla on May 5th, 1862. Cecilia Ramirez is the coordinator, and she can be reached at 361-1928. Also, heartfelt condolences to the Black and Honor families. We lost some really, really, really wonderful people that have done a lot for this community. We will keep you in our thoughts and prayers. That's all I have. Thank you.
Regina Hendricks would have been here tonight. She emailed me about two hours ago. She's stuck in Alabama. Her car broke down. She's down there with students. It's part of her job, showing students college opportunities. She's just emailed me about an hour before the meeting, got her car fixed, so she'll be back for tomorrow night's meeting. But that's why Regina's not here tonight. Counselor Levy.
All right, Dave, you're going to pay now. This is my turn from this whole year of you picking on me. So, I'm actually, no, it's been a joy sitting next to you, learning from you, getting picked on by you. Even, for those of you who don't know, even when Dave goes to the Y to work out, he sends a message by my wife and say he's waiting for me to show up, and I send a message back with tell him to keep waiting because I'm not there yet. But it's been a joy to sit here and be under your leadership. I think you've done an outstanding job with the meetings. You kept them moving. As Sheila said, you kept the community involved. Citizens' input was very good, and we take it seriously down here, but I think a council is known by the leadership that it has in front of it. It's only as good as the leadership. So I think you raised the bar, making sure that we stay professional, stay on task, and still have fun while we're down here as well. Congratulations to the outgoing council members, and welcome to the new. I often, at this time, tell the new councilors, when you come in, learn, learn, and do more learning. Don't come in expecting to know everything because there's a learning curve here. So you will get a few citizens' complaints, I mean, not complaints, and calls, so you'll get them both. But there's nothing wrong with saying, yeah, there's nothing wrong with saying, "I don't know." I often tell people, the worst thing that you can do is make something up. So if you don't know, we have the experts around, the various departments to help us out. We have a city attorney, we have a city manager, we have a city clerk's office, and other departments. If you have questions about anything that's going on in the city, reach out to the individuals in those departments, and they'll be eager to help you out. And if you ever need to know where you need to be at a certain time, call the city clerk's office, and she'll, or Pam, and they'll be happy to help you out. But I say that with seriousness, that they will definitely help you out. One thing I learned when I first got on is the employees of the city are very eager to help the councilors, make sure that they're informed. So I think that's very, it's going to be very good. But take your time, don't expect to learn everything in two weeks, and any question you have, just ask Eric, and he'll help you out. But seriously, and then also, I want to thank the city manager also, and law enforcement. As Sheila said, that they were out helping with the looking for the suspect. But there was never a time that I would text the city manager and say, "How's it going?" And she's like, "I'm still in the ELC." And I'm like, "It's 10 o'clock at night, go home." And she's like, "Well, I got a couple more hours to do." The next morning, I'm texting her at 7:00. "Okay, I'm back." And I was like, "Go home." So, when you have the leadership like that, that shows the dedication of what we are in the city, and it shows, again, why Beloit is such a great place to live, work, and play. So with that, that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you Kevin. I, too, want to reiterate that Lori, our city manager, and her secretary Pam, you won't hear this in any other brief or whatever in the paper, because it's just the way things work, but I think as of Thursday, Friday, and part of the weekend, she spent 12 hours a day at least up in Janesville at the Emergency Center, helping FBI, Secret Service, and others, and our police department and other police departments, track this individual. So that meant she was away from this office, but her office was in Janesville, helping keep Beloit and Rock County and the state very, very safe. So thank you Lori, and thank Pam, your secretary, because you're not one to toot your horn on that. I mentioned Regina will be here tomorrow night. She's missing because she has a very good excuse. We excused her tonight. With that, I want to thank the people of Beloit for allowing me to serve them the last six years. It's been a real honor, and just to serve this fine city. I chose Beloit years ago to stay with my wife and raise our children because this is home. The culture of Beloit is wonderful. If the people would just realize that and realize what a wonderful treasure we have here. And it's the people. It's the people that make it that way. People of Beloit deal with problems. We complain, but we find solutions. And so we lay it out there, and we talk about our problems. We don't repress it, we don't hide it, we don't pretend we have significant problems. If we have a problem, we deal with it. And maybe people in the state and around the area think, "Well, that's bad because you do that." No, that's good, because we solve our problems and we get along in a diverse community. I couldn't have asked a better thing for my children than to be with all types of people and to learn and grow and to forge friendships that would help them grow. So the best thing we have in Beloit is ourselves. This is the strength of Beloit. We ain't rich, but we are rich in character. We're rich in our culture, and that's what we have. I leave the council knowing that we're in good hands. We don't always agree, this council. We've had some arguments and stuff, but you've got seven people here, Beloit, that get along and do what's best for the community. And the unity shown here, we come together and we work together. We may disagree, but we do it respectfully. And I think some other organizations could learn from us, but this group is good, and the people that you've invited to join this council, the seven that will be here on May 1st, or tomorrow night, actually, they're taking over, will carry this forward in a positive, progressive manner. So we're lucky. We're lucky also to have a city manager, I think, in my six years. You should have brought me something to drink.
The machine is on.
Okay. We'll let it go. No, thanks.
I want to share.
No, thanks.
We don't want to share in that box. We're good, we get along fine, but.
Yeah. It's good, good.
I'm with you, Dave. I got you.
I think the best thing, my happiest moment, I think other councilors share this, but I'll say it, was choosing our city manager. We had 50 applicants, and we had some very good applicants, but I think we got the cream of the crop. We have an individual, I feel, is here to stay and grow with Beloit, with her family. She's put together a team that's pretty dynamic and pretty powerful, too, from our city clerk treasure. How many titles do you have now? Many. We've got two chiefs up there, Brad and Dave, who are consummate professionals and have a department of leaders and professionals. I've always been proud of our departments. They're true professionals. And Eric, and Julie, and Beth, and others.
Mary Ann.
Mary Ann, Andrew, just what you've done, putting together your teams. No, I'm okay. Are wonderful. So I could go on and on, but Beloit is in good hands with this council, with the leadership. And I just would like to ask a final thing, for Beloit to embrace Beloit, realize the strength is right here in the people. So, thank you. Okay, let's go on to reports. City manager.
11A is a city branding and logo presentation.
Manager Luther.
So, I'm going to take advantage of the microphone, and before I speak to this issue, I wanted to extend thanks to a couple of other folks. We had Patty in our wastewater department, who volunteered her time to go to the Emergency Operations Center in Rock County as well. Chief Liggett was there, right with me, for many hours. And Chief Zabalski takes one vacation a year, and it's, you know, always scheduled, and this occurred while he was gone. And I know he was on hours of daily phone calls with local officials to help monitor from afar. So I played a very small supportive role, but it was truly a sight to be seen with the number of agencies that were working in cooperation with one another. That was certainly a first of this scale, hopefully the last of my career, but thank you. It was an awesome team effort to see. And we did have individuals in the field on joint task forces, so it made me very proud to be from Beloit. With that, I am happy to speak to the item on the agenda. The City Council adopted a new strategic plan last fall, and one of the new goals unanimously supported is to create and sustain a positive image, enhance communications, and to engage the community. So the last official city logo was adopted sometime, we've determined, in the early 1990s, and unofficial logos have been used sporadically since that time in combination with that logo. The intent of this process was to create a single unifying brand identity that is clean, modern, and promotes the key attributes of the city. This approach provided city councilor involvement, employees were allowed to narrow down choices, and we utilized surveys to solicit input, which have generated to date 1,111 responses as of this afternoon. We have been very fiscally responsible in this effort and allocated $15,000 with an incremental implementation plan that is dependent upon our budget. We recognize we will have to do this gradually over time. The cost of reproduction was a factor in limiting the number of colors and the final options, because we had to be very sensitive to what it would cost in the future to reproduce. And this is particularly important in light of our recent budgetary outlook, which has some pretty significant challenges. If we can secure funding in 2018, we will be soliciting local proposals for website development, redevelopment, refacing, if you will. We determined, though, that before we could tackle our website, which don't get me started on all of that, we first needed to really address this issue of a logo, because we do not have a consistent look and feel amongst all of our departments, and so that was a concern. I do have to mention, in defense of our consultants, that they fought really hard to only bring forward a concept that used Beloit with no City of and no Wisconsin. And staff, myself in particular, pushed back really hard on that, because every time I Googled Beloit when I first moved here, I kept getting Beloit, Kansas. It was kind of ironic, because I'm from Kansas, but I was trying to get information about Beloit, Wisconsin. And clearly, there are some sensitivities to, you know, which state we're in, are we the town, are we the city? That said, like good art, this logo development has certainly generated some conversation. And change of any kind is always going to be a challenge. It's my hope that we can continue to move the city forward in a positive direction. The existing contract with Affirm, who we will hear from shortly, does include the completion of the project with digital proofs and files for comprehensive logo library. With that, it is my pleasure to introduce Danny Mager of Affirm.
Good evening, everybody, and I'm Danny Mager, one of the principals and marketing director of Affirm. I have Megan Hodley, who's account executive, a lifetime resident of Beloit on our team, so she's been really great to give us that inside perspective to make sure that even though some of us on the team are not from Beloit, we are not straying too far from the real deal. So, we've put together a deck to explain to you, a little background on us, our qualifications, and the process that was followed, because there was a very distinct process that was followed, very judiciously, because the budget was very limited to get this done, but we still wanted to make sure we followed the proper process to make sure that where we ended up was where the best possible chance for success. So, great. So I'll give you a little background on who we are, about us. So basically, we are a full-service advertising and marketing agency. We were founded in 1985 by a gentleman named Jim Staples, which is why we were known as Staples Marketing for 30 years. And then we rebranded ourselves as Affirm Agency on July 1st, 2015, to better communicate who we are and what we do, and also to end the confusion with the Office Supply Store, because that got to be a little irritating. And what we do is positively engaging marketing. And we serve a diverse group of public and private sector clients statewide, and we specialize in working with governmental, civic, and nonprofit groups in the areas of branding and social marketing. We've got over 12 years' experience working with various Wisconsin public sector and nonprofit agencies, including branding campaigns for clients such as the Business Healthcare Group and Milwaukee Community Advocates, the City of Milwaukee Department of Public Works, Dane County Regional Airport, the Long Island Railroad, Milwaukee County Child Support Services, the Regional Transportation Authority in Chicago, the Wisconsin Coalition Against Sexual Assault, the Wisconsin Community Services, Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, Wisconsin Department of Justice, Wisconsin Department of Transportation, and the Wisconsin Women's Council. This slide shows a number of the brand identities that we developed for some of those agencies and organizations that I just described. You might recognize some of them, because some of them are very active right now. The second one down on the left is the Dose of Reality logo that we generated for the Wisconsin Department of Justice and the Attorney General for the Prescription Painkiller Abuse Prevention and Awareness Campaign. Many of you know prescription opioids and heroin have become a public health crisis in the state, and that is the logo we developed for the campaign to hopefully stem that tide. Another logo you might be familiar with is in the last row, bottom third, second from the left, is the Zero in Wisconsin logo. That is the statewide highway traffic safety campaign that we've been implementing for the Wisconsin Department of Transportation since 2008. And they had, they wanted an umbrella safety brand that they could put all of their campaigns, seat belts, drunk driving, et cetera, under one umbrella. So you can see, we've got quite a bit of experience in public sector branding. We follow the process, we call it the SMART process, which is basically our strategic process for how we approach any kind of branding process. And SMART stands for Situation Analysis, Identifying, Researching the Situation, The Marketing Strategies and Tactics That Are Developed, Applying and Implementing What We Learned, Then Reviewing and Monitoring Results, Hopefully Leading to the Total Program Success for what we're doing. And so how we did the, we started with the tasks, working with the City of Beloit, was we did brand research, which included reviewing the recent branding initiative the city participated in a number of years ago but did not move forward with. Situation analysis, including a review of other nearby or similar city brands. analysis, including a review of other nearby or similar city brands. Qualitative research, which included numerous interviews of city staff. Research report, which included the description of the most common themes and descriptions that came out of all of those interviews. Brand identity and tagline development, including the exploration of a range of creative options that were narrowed down by employee feedback. So, we had a lot of different options to look at, and what we're about to show you was narrowed down based on feedback we got from city staff. And quantitative research, which included feedback on logo options, as Lori mentioned before, from over 1,000 Beloiters.
I'm going to interject and just point out that in addition to staff, city councillors were invited to interviews. Other community representatives and organizations were invited to those initial interviews as well. So, that was not limited to our own employees.
So, the summarize of the process. So, for the situation analysis, the city of Beloit currently has a number of different logos or brand identities that appear throughout the city. There's one behind you right now. There's a different one on the water tower out there. There's a different one on the police cars. There's a different, I mean, so, and that is, that is an impact on the brands. You have a bunch of different logos that are currently being used. Some of these logos are old and outdated, while others are relatively new and were the result of, of that previous branding initiative that the city didn't move forward with. And so, the city is looking to create a single unifying, excuse me, unifying brand identity that is clean, modern, and promotes the key attributes of the city. And this is part, these are just some of the different logos that are currently being used around the city right now. And you can see that that could lead to some confusion and a lack of a consistent brand across all platforms. So, the project goals summary, develop a new identity and tagline that symbolizes the positive brand attribute or attributes or key characteristics of the city of Beloit. Create a single identity for the city to use. Differentiate the new identity from the town of Beloit, Wisconsin, and the city of South Beloit, Illinois, and Beloit, Kansas. Conduct both qualitative and quantitative research with key stakeholders to get input and approvals prior to implementation. So, we're not just coming up with a design without having this valuable research background and input. So, in addition to the situation analysis, our process involved the following: communications and branding audit. We literally looked at every single piece of material we could get our hands on that had a City of Beloit logo on it, from letterhead, envelopes, tickets, everything that was provided to us. So, we can see the scope of everything, because remember, any new logo would have to fit in on all of those materials. We did the competitor audit of similar communities' branding to see what other cities of similar size and location are doing. We conducted the interviews with council members, city staff, and community members in December of 2016. We developed a creative brief stating what our goals for the process were. We did the creative development on a range of brand identity options. We did messaging development on a range of tagline options. And we conducted the quantitative research with the city of Beloit employees. Some key, interesting, some key takeaways from our qualitative research included, from a key brand attributes, these words came up time and time again about Beloit: diversity, Renaissance, optimistic, hardworking, and scenic. And some key stylistic takeaways we got from the interviews were, there was a preference for using the color blue. The color references water and the Rock River. And there was equity of maintaining blue from recent brand identities. And these were some of the other research of other city brands. We did not do these brands. This was part of our research. So, you can see what some other cities, such as Kenosha and Jamesville and Rockford and Oshkosh, use for their brand identities. And our rationale behind the new brand that we're about to show you was that the new brand identity for the city of Beloit should convey the water, which is a key attribute and physical characteristic of the city of Beloit, being the Rock River. The bridge, the bridge not only recalls the city's multiple bridges, such as the Kent Hendricks Memorial Bridge, but it's a symbolic attribute that helps bridge the past to the future, along with representing in a way to bring together the diverse population of the city of Beloit. And a bridge also signifies strength and stability. And the typography that we used in the proposal logo is meant to be bold and modern, yet clean and friendly. It's not meant to be, we had some that were really, you know, kind of out of left field. What we've settled on is something that's really clean, bold, and friendly. And this was the preferred typeface of the councillors' employees who reviewed the range of different options. And so, branding option number one of the two final options have been created to support the characteristics that I just discussed. Here's the first one, City of Beloit, Wisconsin. And here's what it would look like on a welcome to Beloit sign, or on the water tower. So, you can see the consistency there, having the same logo on both, and on the large water tower that's seen from the highway. And here's branding option number two, which focuses on both the water and then adds the bridge characteristic to the identity. And you can see how that would look on the welcome sign and the water tower, and on the other water tower. And so, in addition to the identity, we developed a new tagline. So, a new tagline is being proposed for use with the updated City of Beloit brand identity. The tasks involved and goals established in developing the new tagline included: consider new tagline concepts that support the key attributes and characteristics of the city that were reinforced with our research. Develop a range of different concepts for review of, for this, by the city staff. Create a positive message for current and prospective City of Beloit residents that is aspirational and not simply a geographic attribute, like gateway to Wisconsin. There's a number of other cities that could claim to be a gateway of Wisconsin, depending on where they are in the state. And make it memorable. And so, the tagline we came up with is Believe in Beloit. And here's the tagline, Believe in Beloit, with the logo option number one. And here it is with the logo option number two, that incorporates the bridge symbol into the logo. Thank you very much for the time.
Questions? Go ahead, Counselor DeForest. You're on.
Thank you. I do have a number of questions. I guess first, we'll just start with the last thing you presented, the tagline. The Believe in Beloit, is that, are we asking outsiders to believe in Beloit? Are we, I guess I'm trying to understand, I like the notion of, you know, getting people to, you know, own the positiveness of Beloit, but I'm, it's, it's like a command, telling people they have to believe in Beloit. And I'm just, I'm struggling with that, because it sounds like we don't believe in ourselves now. And so, and granted, yes, we do have some image ownership problems, but we just confirmed it by putting Believe in Beloit. I don't, I don't know if that makes sense, but that's, I'm really struggling with that to begin with. So, I'll let you answer that and then have more.
Okay. Um, getting everyone, yeah, the mic. Um, so, one of the things you'll see, inspirational thing, you go into a locker room with a team, is believe. Believe you're gonna win. I mean, believe is a very aspirational term. And when you say Believe in Beloit, you're talking about believe in the quality of life in the city, believe that the city is experiencing a Renaissance right now, whether it's all the restaurants and bars downtown, or the film festival, and there's always the college. So, it can, a good tagline can work in multiple different ways. And Believe in Beloit is, is a positive tagline that rolls off the tongue. It is memorable. It's got some good alliteration. And it's, it's being viewed as a, in a positive way.
Okay. And then...
I'm just, from a staff perspective on that as well, I think that it was exciting to think about a tagline that has both internal and external applications. So, rather than depending upon where you're entering Beloit from, you may or may not be the gateway to Illinois. So, while that has appropriate applications for some purposes, particularly businesses we're trying to bring in from Illinois, we wanted to have something that both spoke to internal customers and employees and to the public at large, whether you live here or whether you're visiting here.
All right. And then, my, I guess this is more of a comments than questions. When, when I asked that the community have the opportunity to look at the two options that we were presented, and to have the survey shared, and then also to have those at the library, we, I'll speak for myself, I received an overwhelming response of concerns from people about both options. I know that a lot of people participated in, in the survey, so I'm pleased that there was that resident engagement, involvement. Although, I heard a lot of comments about how there wasn't a third option, which said, you know, I don't really like either one, and I wish there was something else. And so, we don't have that information, which makes it really hard. My, my concern is that I sat here when we were presented with what I call the eight logo, because I still, every time I look at it, it looks like an eight to me. I'm sorry. There's nothing I can do that can take that away.
You're correct. It looks like an eight.
It looks like an eight. And I sat here in shock, like, uh, because, you know, I, I didn't want to be the one that said, we just wasted $100,000 on a logo that I didn't feel like we could live with for 40 years. It's gonna be on our water tower and our fire trucks. And, and we went ahead and kind of proceeded in shock, worried about, we've done this huge process, we spent all this money, and so, we're just gonna have to swallow it and proceed. And I kind of feel like I'm at that place again. I don't want to make that same mistake again, where I'm sitting here going, I'm not really comfortable with either options. This is a, this is a big deal. This is how we present ourselves. It's our, it's our face that we present to the community and to the outside world about who we are. And, you know, given what I've heard from the community about their concerns, I'd like to take the time and really do this right, because there's really a lot at stake. You know, so I would just share, that's my personal opinion. I mean, no disrespect to you, no disrespect to our city manager and how hard she's worked to advance this. And I know there will always be naysayers, people that are unhappy with what we present, but it was such an overwhelming response of, we really don't like these logos, that it's hard for me to jump in and proceed with something that we're gonna have to live with for 40 years. So, that, that's where I'm at. And so, I just share that respectfully, my concerns about that. I would like to slow things down, and let's talk about this more, and let's look at this again, and not make a hasty decision because we're worried about money, or we're worried about some other thing at stake. So, thank you for allowing me to share my concerns. And I hope, like I said, that you, you take those in the respectful intent that they're just, they're meant to be delivered. So, thank you.
Other councillor questions?
Question. First of all, I, I kind of mentioned this earlier as well, that we as councillors had an opportunity also to sit down and take a look at the logo, the, and had an opportunity at that time to say, you know what, I don't like none of them. Scratch them. I don't like them. If you decide to go with one or the other, then, you know, I'll try my best to support it, but I need to go on record as saying, I don't like any of them. So, I don't know if that happened with the seven of us. Also, I also was on Facebook and seeing that a lot of responses. And I have very dear people out there, and she can kill me later when I say it, but a good friend of mine out there, she's looking at me, so I won't say her name, but when I see comments and stuff, I often listening and saying, because there's certain people out there that I know when they say stuff, it, it, it means a lot, because I value what they say, and I value their opinion. And I kind of go to them sometime for advice. So, when I see things like that, it causes me to pause and say, okay, well, wait a minute, what is the real problem here? But then, I also look at the flip side, and I say, well, we have a number of people who like it, who's not saying anything, who are just saying, you know what, I like it, so I don't need to say anything. I don't need to voice my concerns. And I mentioned this earlier, that a lot of times, we often focus on the negative side of what people are saying. We don't like it. We hate it. Scratch it. Do away with it. But what about the individuals who are comfortable with it, and saying, let's move forward, the ones who participated in the survey and saying, let's move forward with it. We like it. We don't give credit to that side as well. So, yeah, we are kind of in that situation, where what do we do? And ultimately, it does come down to, you know, the council saying, here's what we decided that we want to do. So, I think sometimes I want to say, let's bring in the other side who's not vocal in saying they don't like it. The majority of the ones are saying, we're in favor of this, and moving forward with it. Yeah, it's gonna be around for a while, but just like the number eight, the flying bee, or whatever we want to call it, here we go. We're changing that. So, who's to say somewhere down the road, we get a windfall or some money that the next, some other council may say, you know what, let's just redo it all over. But I, I guess I question, how many, if we had a good representation of the city and that was involved in the planning and the process, did we vet it out in the community as a whole? If we got good response, then why not move forward with it? The question, the other question I have is their timeline. Counselor DeForest has said, let's slow it down. Let's, let's discuss it more. Not saying I'm opposed to that, but I guess if we do slow it down, if we do discuss it more, are we gonna discuss it to make changes? Are we gonna discuss it to scratch the whole thing and start over? What would be the purpose of slowing it down to discuss it? And then, if we make changes, is it gonna cost us additional money, what the city may not have? So, I'm not saying I'm opposed to slowing it down, but I don't want to just slow it down and slow it down. I want to slow it down with a purpose. But now, with that purpose, what is gonna be the cost associated with that if we make any changes?
I can share, it's a quick reaction to you. My purpose is to get it right. Like, this is 40 years of our brand, so let's get it right. Let's not say, oh, you know, we spent $15,000. We don't want to waste that money, and let's proceed with a logo that an overwhelming response was not good. So...
Overwhelming response on where? Social media?
Social media, in the grocery store. I...
But, but if we, if we look at the total responses that we're getting from everyone, are we seeing, the majority of the people are saying, we don't want it? Or is it the majority of the people saying, we want it, and we have a small majority, small vocal majority that's saying, we don't like it? And then, so I, I think that's where, that's where I struggle.
We don't know, because there wasn't a third option that said, we don't like either logo, which I wish there had been there, you know. People were forced to choose between the two. And if they felt like, you know what, I'm not really thrilled with either of those, that was, option wasn't able to be expressed. And so, we don't really know. That's fair. We don't know.
Well, but I think that option, even though it may not have been put on the table, I think enough people who were vocal were saying, we don't like either. So, even though the option, the third option wasn't presented, it was kind of communicated that, you know, we don't like.
Which is why I'm so concerned, that people were so concerned about it, that they really made sure they let us know when that third option wasn't there.
Call our city manager. Go ahead.
Mr. Liptke, just from a factual standpoint, of the 179 individuals at the library, five of those 179 said they really did not prefer either and would, would like to keep the current flying bee. So, there's that. We do know of those. And almost everyone wrote a comment that provided a response in favor of their preference, et cetera. That said, from the city employee's standpoint of the 221, I received one comment from an employee saying he didn't prefer either. Now, I recognize it was not a standalone question on the survey, because I believed at the time that there was support to move forward. And I would also indicate that there were three options that I was directed to solicit feedback from the employees from, to narrow down the choices so that we didn't overwhelm with multiple options moving forward. So, I just, from a factual standpoint, want to go through each step. Clearly, the, the council will vote tomorrow, but those are some pieces that I think are important to the overall conversation.
Thank you. Counselor Freschel.
Like, as Lori said earlier, there's a number of things that'll happen. It's one of the reasons we wanted to do this, was so we could put this in place first, so we can move on, update the website, consolidate our brand image into, so our Parks Department looks like a City of Beloit Parks Department. And I do get the Beloit thing. I'm really with you on that, okay? But, at the same time, I understand that people don't get us confused with our surrounding neighborhood. with our surrounding neighbors, and it's to our detriment sometimes. So we would like to take ownership of that and be the city. So I guess we've got to do it that way. It's, we're stuck with our geography. Anyway, I think it's really neat, too, that you guys did a lot of research and did some really good research that distilled the selections down to the bridge over water and the flowing water concept. And that's not unlike the same argument that happened when we came up with the B behind me. It was a very similar thing, and I wish I could remember it better, but it was darn near 30 years ago. Sorry. But, so you've done the homework, you've distilled it down into, the selections down into a couple of really good ones. I really wish I'd seen the renderings on the water tower and the sign as part of the voting process, because I, it definitely would have changed my vote. I can tell you that right now. I preferred the bridge. I did not like the art. I liked the concept. And I'm going to tell you right now, I would like to fix the art. And I don't know what you guys can do with your budget. I've been told a lot of different things, but I don't think the art is ready for primetime. There's just something clunky about it. I couldn't put my finger on it when I met with the city manager. I said, "The font is kind of weird. I don't get it." But I'm not a graphic designer, so I called my brother, who is, and he's educated me a little bit about the process and how it happens and what goes on. So he concurs. We need better art. And of course, he'll always say we need better art, but that's, you know, that's also part of the problem. But I don't think this is quite ready. I am ready to support the concept we've arrived at here, as far as the bridge over water flowing river concept. I am not ready to support the art as presented as something to put on our, on our building. And your presentation just now convinced me that that's the wrong design to go on the water tower. I like the eyebrow better.
Well, that's one of the options.
I know, I know. Yeah, that's, the voting process has apparently led to a different, you know, so, but anyway. I wanted to bring that out. I want to suggest that, that whatever we do, we don't start over, as somebody around here has mentioned earlier, and some, a lot of people on Facebook said it, too. I don't want to start over. I want to take what you've learned and what you've given us and tweak it, or whatever we have to do, I want to make it better. I think it needs to be better. I think we deserve better. And I think it's really close. So thank you.
Well, for that reason, Mark, I'll mention, we need to move forward on this. And I want to reiterate what Kevin, what you said to a great degree. This, in my mind, is far superior to the figure eight, or whatever you want to call it. But let me, let me use some of the psychologist in me to say that I don't know if there is perfection out there. And if we change this now to appease some of the people who don't like it for very justified reasons, we're going to make those who do like it unhappy for other reasons. Is there perfection, is my question. I think you satisfy some critics. Others will be ticked off. My, my opinion is this. We have two viable options. The strength of the logo is not in the logo, but in the people and their character and how they carry forth in Beloit with pride. And so I think it's time to move forward. So I'll just leave it at that. Final comment, Sheila.
All right. Thank you. You know, I had asked, can we tweak? You know, can we make some changes? I like the bridge concept as well, but I can't help but see the Tiffany Bridge in that bridge. It looks like the Tiffany Bridge to me, and the Tiffany Bridge is not the City of Beloit. And so I, it's like the eight again. It's like, um, I don't want to proceed with something that looks clearly like it's not meant to be. It doesn't look like a bridge at Beloit. And I understand that you're going metaphorically with this concept. I love the idea of bridging people that we do, bridging community and business, the private and the public. I love that. But I see the Tiffany Bridge. I can't help it. So if we could tweak it, please.
The council will vote tomorrow night.
I just have a, I'm just concerned about, we've already spent $15,000, and I'm certainly, I understand more about branding, and you've done a wonderful job tonight. But I'm just wondering, if we've already spent the $15,000, you know, where is this going to put us at with the timeline? And that's concerning for me because I think it's, it's the taxpayers' money, and we need to be aware of that and be careful with how we use it.
Let me, just real quick, Dave.
Well, we have two more. Kevin?
Just a question that I've asked earlier. The, we talk about the timeline. Is there a timeline? Now, you know, to the city manager, if there's a timeline, but then I also follow that up with what I asked previously, what Counselor DeForest stated about laying it, you know, slowing it down. Slowing it down, what does that entail? When we say slowing it down, I know she says, "Get it right." Well, "get it right," does that mean we're going to make changes? And if we're going to make changes, the ultimate question that I still have is what is going to be the cost to those changes, and where is that cost going to come from?
Manager Luther, go ahead.
We have already exhausted the development funds that were allocated to the, that portion of the contractual agreement. So the iterations that we've been through so far have, those funds have well been spent. And we, I know, have received many additional hours of work that were not anticipated when that agreement went into place, and we're very appreciative of that. So the, the only remaining obligation of the contract is the final design work, the final digital files, the pieces that we need to create the reproducibility, if you will, of the final documents. So that said, we would need to allocate additional dollars to do additional design work, if that is the desire of the majority of the council tomorrow evening.
Final comment. Mark, did you want?
I just wanted to point out that even though we, no matter what happens, at this point in time, we have, we have results. We have, we have something, we have learned something. We've got results we can work with and we can go forward with. It's not a complete waste, Regina. I just wanted, you know, we're not, it's not just out the window. It's not like the flying eight all over again, okay? Or the flying, the I8, I8. It's not like the I8 all over again. But it's, it's, if we, if we short circuit the whole process and we start over, that is a waste because we've learned something valuable. Not only have we learned something valuable here in this process today, we've affirmed the old process.
Thank you.
Which arrived at something very similar. So I'm actually encouraged by this. I'm sorry, guys. I'm just disappointed with the art. I'm kind of weird that way. I'm not looking for perfection. I understand that, you know.
I think the consultants had a, I think the consultant had a comment.
Megan, who, again, is from Beloit, has wants to say something.
Go ahead, Megan.
Hi. So I am from Beloit, born and raised, public school, all the whole nine yards. And I just wanted to ensure the council that this project was taken extremely seriously, and I did take it to heart, being from here. It was a very exciting process to be a part of, and I just wanted to ensure that this isn't a random agency from Wisconsin. You have a Beloit native on your side, and I just wanted to make that on record.
Thank you, Megan. Thank you, Dan. Tomorrow night, we're going to vote. Appreciate it. Final comment?
Unless anyone think we had nothing to do with the eight that everyone's talking about, we had nothing to do with it.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. 12, final.
Approving water utility fees, charges, and rates for the City of Beloit, Wisconsin.
Mr. Miller, Eric.
Good evening. Just quickly, thank you, Dave. I really appreciate all the support that you've, you know, given to me personally, and really appreciate the time that you've spent on council. So thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
In July of last year, the utility filed an application to the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin to increase the water rates. The PSC has approved a rate increase of approximately 7%, which will be used to pay for plant infrastructure and increasing maintenance costs. So if approved, the rates will become effective on May 1, and those would be pending any final authorization and order from the PSC. So these rates were originally brought forward in the budget process, and actually, a higher rate was actually brought forward at that time. And PSC has approved a lower rate, but we are bringing that forward now. So if approved, in this resolution, it would just change the current fee schedule of the water rates. So are there any questions?
Counselor DeForest.
I would just like to make a comment. This is a serious matter. One of our greatest resources is our water. The fact that we have such cheap water rates has helped us attract the food processing industry. And so I'm really, want to express my gratitude that we approach this very thoughtfully, that we considered impact on businesses and residents in raising these rates, and also that we balance that with knowing that we have to make sure that we have a sustainable utility, that we can purchase the equipment, the material, and the items that we need to keep our water clean and safe. And, you know, I really appreciate the stewardship of our water resources staff and what a fantastic job they do. And I just want to assure the public that these rates are truly necessary to continue to sustain what we do. This wasn't just some haphazard, "Yeah, we could use some more money. We're just going to grab it from the water utility." Because, you know, residents will see this on their bills, reflected on their bills, and I want to assure them that this was a very thoughtful, considerate process that we took to decide that we needed to do this for the viability of our water. So I just wanted to make that statement. Thank you.
Is there a motion? Moved by Duncan?
Second.
Seconded by Levy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Mark, you're up.
Make a motion for adjournment.
Well, before you adjourn, I wanted to...
Dave, you should make the motion.
Well, okay, but I, before we do, I want to, I don't, I just wanted to point out again, I mentioned a few names, but I want to thank Beth Krieger, our city attorney, for going above and beyond and being a very strong attorney for the city and being part of that team. And anybody else that I didn't mention that's on this team, Andrew Yonkey, I don't know if I mentioned your name, but thank you, and Miriam Gregg. Wonderful team. Okay, with that, make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.